Now 9:07 a.m. on Thursday, January 29, 2015. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the senators that are with us today. To my right, Speaker Judith Wampat. To my left is Senator Frank Uggan, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and Senator Anthony Etta. Thank you for joining us this morning. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the following bills: Bill 133 introduced by Senator Speaker Judy Wampat, an act to transfer Title of Lot Number 5397, municipality of Barigata, Guam, to the University of Guam; Bill 8-33 introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez, an act to provide for the development and implementation of comparable rate schedule R charges for residential multifamily accommodations by the Guam Power Authority; and Bill 18-33 introduced by Senator Anthony Etta, an act to add a new Chapter 81 to Title 21 Guam Code Annotated relative to the development of broadband and telecommunications infrastructure on public rights of way. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media. And the local media were given a five-day notice on January 22, 2015, and a 48-hour notice was provided on January 26, 2015, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those who are providing testimony, please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony on these bills until 5:00 p.m. on Friday, February 6, 2015. Please address a testimony to Senator Thomas Seata, chairperson of the committee. And we'll now go ahead and we'll start our public hearing. We'll start with the first bill, Bill 1-33, by Speaker Judy Wampat, and I'll go ahead and yield to the speaker, to the sponsor, to introduce her bill.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this legislation transfers Lot 5397 to the exclusive control of the University of Guam, which would be an essential component of the university's strategic hold. Currently, the property is jointly controlled by the university, the Department of Agriculture, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. The transfer would allow then the university to continue on its track to increase revenue sources, foster sustainability, and build capacity. The university will continue to be responsible stewards of the land, of the lot, and that any development will complement it and also be consistent with the content, the intent of the conservation reserve. Now, and I would like to ask you, is that there are some recommendations for amendments, and I don't know if you would like to hear them now or after the questioning, or do you want me to submit this to the committee?
I think...
So there are just two lines, five and seven?
Well, we can go ahead and the committee will receive it and then accordingly incorporate it during the microphone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Speaker. At this time, we have signing up to provide testimony, Mr. Tino Uggan, you're going to provide oral testimony? Okay, please step forward. Chris Felix on Bill 1-33? Okay, please step forward. Mr. Michael Borja. And then we also have President Underwood from the University of Guam. So we will go ahead and we'll proceed in the order that we call them, so we'll start with Mr. Uggan.
Good morning, senators. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment. What I'd like to do, we have actually submitted official comment from the Department of Agriculture in regards to this bill. Let me set back my name, my full name is Celestino F. Uggan. I am the chief of the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources, Department of Agriculture. The bill itself, as written, the Department of Agriculture actually opposes as the bill is written. Our main concern is mainly that the property, the bill itself mentions a pristine forest within that area and on Lot 5397, and in the same token, the bill actually allows for the University of Guam to develop as is. Our concern is mainly for the pristine forest. As you know, the Department of Agriculture under the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources and Forestry Soil and Resources Division is mandated and to manage all the conservation lands. We are concerned that such, once the bill is passed, we may lose control. We understand that Dr. Underwood and his staff currently will do probably what is right in the conservation of the lands. We have no problem with that. What we are concerned with is that if there is a change in administration, the whole property itself, once they take ownership of it, may change in its direction. So what we would like to see is maybe a potential, the Marine Lab, we've partnered with the University of Guam Marine Lab, the University of Guam College of Ag, with all the, probably quite a few of the other researchers and staff members, PhDs in the University of Guam. What we'd like to just basically see is that the ownership of the, I'm sorry, the designation of the property is for conservation purposes, and it's designated as conservation land. We have a few other properties, and most of it is mandated under our department to manage conservation land as deemed reasonable. Whether we own it or it's under title for the University of Guam, we probably are not as concerned, as more concerned with the designation as conservation land. And that's probably all our opposition in that regard. Just as a point of reference, as far as what we had submitted, and it's just a typo, towards the end, we referenced reery, W-E-R-I. It was actually written in as W-R-E, and so that's actually a typo that I actually missed. And that's basically our concern. Thank you very much for that, this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Uggan. I also want to recognize the presence of the Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz. Thank you, Vice Speaker. Mr. Chris Felix?
Thank you, Senator, Mr. Chair. I'm just here as a regent for the University of Guam, just speaking in favor of the bill. I don't think there's any better steward of this property to protect it than the University of Guam.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Mike Borja?
Half a day, Madam Speaker, Mr. Chairman, senators. My name is Michael Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management. As Dr. Underwood knows, there's a lot of I's and T's that need to be corrected before we do a title transfer, and in this case, it has that as well. What we have found in the Department of Land Management is that Lot 5397 is actually the municipality of Mingila, so we just want that to be corrected. Lot 5397 has gone through the Land Registration Title Act with the decree establishing title filed with our office as instrument number 600683, and is in favor of the government of Guam. In other words, we do have clear title of the land. Lot 5397 was established as a conservation area to be administered and controlled by the College of Guam in conjunction with the Departments of Agriculture, Land Management, and Public Works. This tract is free from any clouds unless the departments noted do not favor the transfer of the land. In consideration of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission's defined course of action with reference to the transfer of properties, we request the following clause be incorporated into the legislative presentation, that quote, "Title and ownership of the transferred property remain with the University of Guam for a period of 10 years. In the event that the title and ownership for the property be conveyed or otherwise transferred to another entity, such title and ownership of the property shall revert to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission." The Department of Land Management supports the University of Guam with its realization efforts of their plans, goals, and objectives while focusing on the enhancements and protection of the natural resources, and does not object to the title transfer in favor of the University of Guam. We wish to ascertain that the title, the transfer of the official title and ownership is in accordance with the mandates defined in 21 GCA Chapter 75. Further, this chapter, this, excuse me, this transfer shall contribute to the university's asset inventory sustainability with no financial adverse impact to the Department of Land Management or the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. So in our findings, that in order for this title transfer to occur, there has to be concurrence from the Department of Land Management, Public Works, and the Department of Agriculture. And I also presented, and I don't think anyone's here from Public Works, but I did present written testimony, or yeah, written a letter from Department of Public Works concurring with the title transfer as well. So with the provisions that Department of Agriculture has requested that this land remain as a conservation area, that would be what they would, all they would ask for for their concurrence to the title transfer as well. And with all three concurrences in place, if that is, if the bill is written with that addition from Department of Agriculture, then we'll have the ability to transfer the title to the University of Guam.
Thank you very much. Dr. Underwood?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Buenos, half a day to the council, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm very honored to have the first bill, be it about the university, so I want to make sure it succeeds.[740.29][740.29](Laughter) I want to thank Speaker Wampat for taking this on. You know, I had a meeting in my office about, I'd say about three years ago, with Agriculture and Land Management and Parks and Recreation about this particular issue, and we reviewed the entire history of this, and the original intent was always to grant the property to the University of Guam, the College of Guam, with some understanding that the pristine areas and conservation be firmly put in place, and if, in the process of working this legislation, those caveats are felt to be necessary to be put in the legislation, then certainly it's something that I think the university wholeheartedly supports. So I think, you know, the, but at the time, I just want to say that all were in agreement, so I didn't, I think we did our due diligence in that regard. This particular property did come up in a proceeding earlier in the '90s, and apparently the University of Guam was absent from those proceedings, and that's why we're in this situation today. Otherwise, that transfer would have been consummated at that time. But, you know, that's all water under the bridge. But I do want to assure the members of the committee and my colleagues and cooperating agencies that we have no intent of, although there are no shortage of ideas about, you know, building a medical school down there, building a whole new campus down there, in fact, you know, there's been developers who've come to me with that idea, but that, of course, is not part of the picture. This is one of the most pristine areas in Guam. We recognize that. We recognize that there's a lot of ajuzu there, and if we were, the university were to take on the ajuzu, I think the ajuzu will win emotionally and spiritually and by law. So we're not interested in that, but we do think that we have the kind of academic resources and appreciation for the environment, which I think will be a help to making the conservation area more useful, more public, and more available for further research. So we're, we support the intent of the bill, and we'll do our part to make sure that the concerns of the other agencies are dealt with directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Underwood. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the panel for any questions, starting with Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask a question, but after I heard Dr. Underwood's testimony, because in my conversation with Tino, at least earlier, is that if the university was going to agree with some of their concerns in trying to protect it as a conservation site, and you agreed, so I really don't, you know, really have any question. I'm just happy that, you know, for the very first bill, because everybody agrees, so thank you very much, and I really appreciate your statements this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Uggan?
Mr. President, I really appreciate your perspective and your continued ongoing efforts with the conservation of that property. I guess my question would be, property transfers to yourself, to UOG, and then let's say, five years, 10 years down the road, the leadership at that point in time says, okay, we're going to disregard the pristine conservation concept, and we're going to move in a different direction in terms of the use, maximum use of that property. Would it be appropriate to perhaps incorporate something in here? I know it says the original intent of the conservation reserve, but would it be appropriate to allow for perhaps even more highlight of this property being utilized specifically by UOG, and that the conservation is going to be a major feature moving forward indefinitely?
Well, I think we'll have to look at the specific language, but, you know, generally the intent is clear, and certainly we'll support that. But, you know, we have to look at the specific language as well. The university, obviously, you know, it's all historical knowledge. At one point in time, the university had the opportunity to buy that whole area, private property, and it failed to do so. And so now the area, there are areas there where there's lots of development now, and so those areas are kind of, you know, there's intrusions on them, so we just have to deal with that. But, you know, no, I really appreciate, and I certainly endorse anything that will take it to the nature of a covenant, which if violated will revert, reverse transfer. I think something that, you know, Mike pointed out here might be useful, and, you know, periodic review, there's, you know, there's all those options, I think.
And I'll just close with this particular comment, is would the University of Guam be open to any seasonal ajuzu hunting? Because I recall my younger days when I...
They have to be three inches across the back.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Bring your ruler.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Senator Rodriguez? Senator Etta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Uggan, how much of this lot do you know is considered pristine forest?
You know, Senator, I knew that question was coming down the pike, and I didn't get a chance to do that. If you look at the property itself, the Lot 5397, the areas around the Marine Lab are real fairly defined, and then, then as you move northward on that 5397, you know, you basically have the, on the map that was provided, it's basically fairly green in terms of its topo designation. My guess is that, and this is all in the University of Guam's input as far as the bill is concerned. My initial thought, initially when I read that, is that it was, oh my gosh, we're moving pristine property, and so that was only our concern is that, in that regard, is even if you take a portion off that, and subdivide it, whatever, and leave the area, and Dr. Underwood is, it appears is in agreement with that as well. But we, we, just a good portion, I've mentioned that to Forestry Resources Division's chief, he mentions the Forestry Act that was actually passed a year ago or so. So those are very opportunities, and we can partner with the university in multiple ways to get this thing really to the next level, and I think that's what we're looking at, is not only set it aside as some trophy pedestal, but also move on to the next level, and I think that's what we're all about.
So does the Department of Agriculture look at, instead of transferring the whole Lot 5397, transferring title to it, carving out that section that is the pristine forest and keeping it within the agency and the rest of it to be transferred?
As far as, as far as ownership, I don't think we are in disagreement. As Dr. Underwood had alluded to, the University of Guam has really looked at it as a conservation land, and I think that's what we are just concerned, is that whoever gets it, whether we do or the University of Guam receives it, that that portion of the property is used for specifically inhabitant law as conservation land, and that's all, that's all we want. And so I think we're open to either way, I think, I believe.
Okay, that's good, and I'm glad to hear that, whether the whole lot is transferred or carved out. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Etta. Vice Speaker? Okay. Okay, there's, that's, that's all the folks that have signed up to testify on Bill 133, so thank you very much for, and deem that Bill 1-33 has had its public hearing. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 8-33 that was introduced by Senator Dennis G. Rodriguez. It's an act to provide for the development and implementation of rate schedule charges for residential multifamily accommodations. So I'm going to go ahead and yield to the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to have this bill publicly heard again in this term, and then for your support. What Bill 8-33 basically does is mandate that the Guam Power Authority develop and establish a residential rate schedule for residential multifamily accommodations, which are also known as condominiums or appartements, which would in turn provide for a fair and equal rate schedule for their residents who are, who are, who are resident, just like you have your own single-family homes. And so this, this issue has been ongoing for the past 14 years. Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide the committee enter for the record, a stack of these documents that I have received in the process of putting this bill together last year. You'll see here that between the realtors and the residents who have approached GPA, there's, there's record that, you know, GPA wants to move forward with this, and really, you know, what, what we're doing here is just pushing it forward and ensuring that it gets done finally. I think 14 years of waiting for this to happen is long, and so, and so I'm hoping that with the dialogue and the dialogue we've had, the record we've had established from the last public hearing, that we can move forward with this legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call forward individuals who have signed up from the realty, realty side of the house, and then I'm going to call up a second group, which will be GPA, CCU, and the PUC to provide their testimony. So actually, the realty folks signed, did sign up first, though, so I'm going to go ahead and call up Chris Felix, Ms. Palmer, Ryan Guzman, Mr. Joe from Oka Towers, how do you pronounce that name? Man Kusel, and Mr. Clayton Duval. We're going to go ahead and we'll start in the order of sign up. So we'll start with Mr. Chris Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, senators. I'm sorry you get me two for one today, and I apologize. I speak in favor of the bill. I'm one of the people who have been working on this for 14 years. It's basically a number of condominiums and complexes, multifamily complexes, with back, especially the ones with backup generators, had to be wired in such a way back then, or were wired in such a way back then, where the meter size, they had to have a large meter, then the generator then goes to the units, so that when the power goes off the backup generator and there's no back feed out into the system. And the meter, obviously, is a very large one when you have multifamily. And unfortunately, GPA, by their regulations, have to bill based on meter size, not on use. And so these meters now are considered commercial and billed at commercial rates. This seems to create an inequity of between 15 to about 35 percent, depending on usage, because the more you use commercial, the less the rates go. So it creates an, so people living in condominium complexes, owners who live there, are paying much higher rates for those condominium complexes that are billed in this way. Most of the complexes have sub-meters, not all of them, where they're billed, where the management reads the bills and bill each homeowner based on the mass bill they get the pro-rata share. So that's handled internally. All we're asking is that some formula or some way be worked out between, with GPA about billing those units that are residential units residential rates. And I've been assured by Vic Rages, electrical engineer, I think there's a letter from him that was, will be presented, that it can be done, and that's basically it. All we want to do is residential units be billed as residential rates, and condominiums have always been considered residential. Again, this is, there's many past letters and everything, and I'm glad the senator is submitting, resubmitting them. You know, I understand this, this is bill, if becomes law, just kind of says, GPA, please try to figure this out, and, you know, I know the devil's in the details, but I'm sure with the legislature's help and us and GPA, that we could work out a solution to this problem and get the rates built. It's been way too long, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felix. Ms. Palmer?
Good morning, senators. Thanks for the time. I am Deanna Palmer, and I'm president-elect for 2016 for the Guam Association of Realtors. So I'm here in that capacity, but I'm also here for my personal capacity as voter. I'm excited that the Guam Association of Realtors is really getting much more involved in the legislative process. We've been working towards this for years and years, and so this is another step forward for our organization, working with the legislature. I am in support of the bill. I do believe that the powers that be and the minds that have been working on this know what they're doing, they can come up with a solution that's workable and affect many people's lives based on their power bills, which, you know, are only going up no matter what we do. So anyway, support, I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Guzman?
Half a day, my name is Ryan De Guzman. I am the president of the Guam Association of Realtors. I stand to testify in favor of Bill 833 introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez. We believe this bill will help residents living in certain condo units receive residential rates instead of the current commercial rates, which is higher. This bill becomes, if this bill becomes law, we do hope that Guam Authority and the Guam Association of Realtors and the legislature can all work together collaboratively on developing a fair rate structure that will serve the residents who will be impacted. We believe it's a step in the right direction, and again, we support Bill 833. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with everyone on a reasonable resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Mr. Man Kusel?
Good morning, senators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Speaking on behalf of Oka Towers as the president of their association, and I'm also the vice president of Alpha Bank Cove, I've lived on Guam a long time, since 1990, in both houses and in condominiums. I've lived on Guam a long time, since 1990, in both houses and in condominiums, and so I've seen both sides of it. And I can assure you that the experience in a condominium is very residential. And we support the bill, because we believe just fair is fair if it's a residence and it's a family living there. It should be billed as such. And so we represent 170 units at Oka Towers, and I think we also delivered, signed petitions of those that agreed with us, our residents themselves. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duval?
Good morning, Senators and Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, in the 44 years I've been here, I've only been in this forum twice, and both of it's for the same thing. You know, I got here early enough so that when we had the power barges that Mr. Noel Payne collaborated on with John Benevente and brought to Guam, and we, Guam didn't have the power base that it has now. I lived through the load shedding blues, which, you know, actually spawned a musical hit. And, you know, I'm impressed with GPA. They've done a great job. They provide consistent power. We don't have the power outages. And they're, you know, always looking to improve their base loads and their product, and they're looking for ways to, you know, keep the costs within, you know, reason, you know, based upon the demands they have. And they have revenue stream challenges with solar power, you know, people doing what they're doing to save money. And so I, you know, I fully recognize what they're up against. So we're just looking for some help from their side. And, you know, Senator Rodriguez commented that GPA wants to be involved and find something, but we haven't seen that in actual practice. You know, I manage a Lupan Cove with 214 units. I've got more than 20 years there. We have the most, probably the most efficient system for that type of complex on the entire island. We're master metered. We didn't engineer it that way. That's just the way it is. But it's all residential. Now granted, we do have large motors. We have a chilled water plant, so we have three-phase power. We have large motors. And so there is, you know, I understand a demand schedule that needs to be there. So any reconfiguration of the rate schedule would have to be a hybrid. It couldn't just be, it couldn't just say, "Okay, you guys are all residential. Never mind your power factor situation. Never mind your demand," because they have to take that into consideration. You know, they have a certain amount of demand that they have to deliver when we need it. And we understand that. And so there has to be some kind of hybrid rate schedule developed, which can be done. George Beecher, who was a controller for GPA, lived at Lupan Cove, was on the board of directors, and he said, "The math is simple, you know. That's not the problem. It's the politics. You have a monopoly you're dealing with, and, you know, what are you going to do? You're the only people that provide power." So, you know, fighting City Hall can be a tough hustle. So this is, you know, this is really the only forum we have to be able, you know, to compel, if you will, GPA to, you know, sit down and let's, you know, let's work out the math. So in my estimation, the only two items that most of the master meter places have to deal with are the energy charge strictly for the KWH consumed, never mind the demand. If there's a demand charge we have to pay, we pay it. If there's a power factor charge we have to pay, we pay it. All the other line items for insurance, wastewater, that's all the same across the board for every single rate, every single rate class. It's just the, it's just the energy charges for the actual consumption of KWH where I think there needs to be some parity. And they have all the information. They know how many single-family dwelling rate payers they have. They know how many master metered rate payers they have. You can do the math as to, you know, how many units under that master meter. And they can come up with a mathematical equation where you may have to adjust the rates for the entire residential class, but we're only talking about two line items. And that may end up giving us a 3% break in our overall power bill, but I'm paying $60, $63,000 a month. Every year, I face the gauntlet of homeowners that if I have to raise the rates, because I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do in the Middle East. I don't know where the power, the fuel charges are going to go, which is a huge part of the bill, and neither does GPA, you know. And they have to do what they have to do, and I understand they have to recover that. So we're just looking for some equity. We are a residential condominium. We have no commercial activities, you know, and so, you know, we're stuck with what we got. For us to rewire the building would be $2.5 million to put in individual meters, and then we'd have to throw out our entire chilled water plant, which is very efficient, and put in split units so that everything would be metered through the individual unit. So we can't do that. So, you know, we're looking for a little equity, and I, you know, I applaud you for trying to bring that about. Certainly, you know, the powers that be that do crunch the numbers, I think they can come up with a reasonably equitable solution that's spread across, you know, a broad base and will be revenue neutral. I mean, I know that's what they're looking for. They don't want to lose any revenue, and I can't blame them, you know. So I think there's a way to do it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. I'm going to go ahead and allow the panel to ask, the senators to ask this panel if they have any questions before I bring up the next group. But I'm going to start off with one question now. I've, you know, Mr. Felix, you indicated that maybe by changing from whatever your rate charges are now to a residential rate, that could make a difference, that you're probably paying about 15, condos are probably paying anywhere between 15 and 35% more than, let's say, if it was charged at residential rate. Mr. Duval, you indicated that maybe if those rate schedules were changed to residential, that possibly you might see maybe a 3% discount, which on a $60,000 bill, $60,000 a month bill, that could be quite a bit. And my question would be, has the association conducted any kind of a quantitative analysis to see if in fact the difference in charges would be as large as 15 to 35%? Or is this kind of anecdotal?
As I said in my testimony, depending on your usage, the much larger buildings, because they use more, their rates go down, so their savings are less. When I look at smaller units like Epaule Gardens, 50-some units, Villa Contentosi, which is only 22 units, those types, that's the ratios. We know, because we get the bill, and I have to bill out at that rate to, I read all the sub-meters, so I know what rate I'm billing out, and it varies with each unit we manage. So the numbers I gave were based on a year or two ago computations.
Okay. So there's really been no quantitative analysis done to show, you know, if we were to change those rates to an R schedule, it's going to be?
Just, I know what I bill out to each homeowner. That's it.
Okay, great.
Okay. With respect to the two items that I focus on, on the billings, and GPA holds, they hold, you know, all the cards, because they know how many rate payers they have. And so if I had that information, I could sit there and crunch the numbers. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't really take, you know, rocket science to do it. But for the, the energy charge for a residential unit, over 500 kilowatts is 9.3 cents. The energy charge for our complex is over 55,000 kilowatts, so I have to use 55,000 kilowatts, is 7.7 cents, okay? The energy charge for my first 55,000 kilowatts is 14.7. The energy charge for the first 500 kilowatts on the residential is 5.5 cents. So in my analysis, you know, just crunching some numbers without having the data that GPA holds, I'm figuring 3%. Well, 3%, you know, that's 1,800 bucks a month I can put into, you know, other things in the building that demand, you know, attention.
Okay. All right, great. Anybody on the, oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I'm sorry. Let me defer first to the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for coming down today again and testifying. Just a follow-up to the chairman's question about whether there was any analysis done or study. Back in 2000, November 9, 2007, GPA wrote to you, Mr. Felix, that based on the subject of, you know, looking at the rate structure for residents who are in condominiums, that they would be doing a review of existing rate schedules, and that this review would be done in 2009 when they would approach PUC. Has this report been done, and does it take into account the issue that you guys brought up to them back then?
No, sir.
Okay. So another question I have is that have the association, any resident, ever come before the PUC with this, with this issue?
Not formally. It was discussed with prior PUC chair, and it was discussed, and basically, we were told to go back to GPA, that it would be better to go through them.
Okay. That's important to have on the record, because we do have testimony here that PUC suggests that they, that any attempt to change any rate structure must go to them first. And so it really, as I said during the last hearing, is very confusing, because then you have conflicting testimonies from GPA back, or not testimonies, but letters, responses to you and to other members of the community, that indicate to me they want to move forward, and that's why I did mention it earlier, is that they indicate they do, they do want to move forward with this. In one letter, it talks about, you know, maybe retrofitting the wires that come into the buildings. And in another letter, it's not about the meters, it's about the usage. And so, you know, and these will all be public record. I'll submit it to the committee. And so I'm interested to hear now what the position is of our GPA as well. So that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Vice Speaker?
Clayton, I was at Lupan Cove, so just for disclosure at one point. The amount that you talked about, the $63,000, if my math is right, and you divide that up by the 240, the power bill per unit is about $300 a month, right? Or, I mean, it's 252 in my, in my, with my little calculator.
Well, unfortunately, that's not how it necessarily works, because it's, the pro-rata division of expenses and the assessment of common area fees is based upon the square footage. So a two-bedroom unit is going to pay significantly more than a studio unit. And you've got different-sized air handlers. You know, again, our main chilled water plant is probably where we consume a lot of the power, you know, pumps it around. At night, I can run that entire building on 70% of one chiller bank, which equates to 5,000 BTUs of consumption per apartment on average, which is pretty phenomenal. It shows that we're, that our, that our equipment's very efficient, our building's very tight, so we deliver a pretty good product. But yeah, unfortunately, you know, the townhouse units pay right now $1,236 a month. And so their share of the power is closer to 600 bucks a month, whereas the studio units, their share of the power is closer to the $220 per month.
Because I think you mentioned, in order to be able to take advantage of the residential rate, you would have to rewire the building, and it would cost $2.5 million?
If we were, if we were going to do individual metering, and then we would have to, you know, for, you know, part of the problem with Lupan Cove specifically is the common area fee is set for the year, and if your unit is, you can't, you can't just turn off your power and save any money. All you're doing is turning off the, you know, off the power to your air handling unit, which consumes, has a 1/8 horsepower motor. So it doesn't consume any power. It's the chilled water plant. So to get around that and give the residents the benefit of not having to use the power when they're not there, like Oka Towers, they have a common area fee, and then you have a separate, they have a separate meter, and you have a separate bill. But all of your power consumption is based upon what you use in your unit, because they have individual splits. We don't have that. So we'd have to retrofit the entire building with individual split units. And, you know, and maybe our complex is the only one, or one of a few, you know, that has that particular configuration.
But I think it's important for the panel and the legislators to understand that, that that's where the problem is, is that I'm not sure if it was an engineering demand in the '70s and the '80s when these things were built, or if it was, whether or not it was a cost. I've moved into a condo, and it's, we're all separately wired, but it was a substantial cost to put in the individual amounts, and that comes down at the cost of the purchase price, because it wasn't free to put in those things, and all the different, all the different individual split air units that you're talking about. And they can be very efficient. My power bill last month was $94. I have two big. So I, but I'm just, it's, I understand that the GPA's concern is that you're coming into a main source, I mean, a big, and there is no individual ones. And so the question is then, who is to make the investment? Are condominiums to do? Would it be the WHO, the condominium association, to get the $2.5 million to do the retrofit as part of the condo costs, the renovations, and then be able to take advantage of the individual residential rates? Or is it, when you break it down, that it really, there really isn't that much to save? I mean, difference, that's why I think the chairman's question, did anybody do a quantitative analysis to determine whether or not there's that much to save?
Well, the retrofit, in our case, would be just the power cabling and the metering for the individual unit. And then, then you'd have to add all of the air conditioning units and everything on top of that. You know, in the case like Oka Towers, they have a master meter, and then they have all the sub-meters. We don't have any sub-meters. So in their case, you know, they're doing GPA's job for them, and they're paying, you know, GPA sends them a bill, and they get paid, and then Oka Towers has to collect. In our case, we get one bill, we pay it, they get it on time. They don't have to read 214 meters. They don't have to install. They don't have to deal with 214 individual customers. They deal with us. And then it's, you know, if you don't pay your common area fees, we take you to court. In their case, if they don't pay the bill that is sent out by Oka Towers, they cut them off. So, yeah, there's, you know, that's why, you know, my suggestion, I mean, you couldn't just, you could, it'd have to be some kind of a hybrid class. Both Oka Towers and Lupan Cove have some machine read that is designed for the type of building that is being serviced. So you have bigger motors. You have to pump, you know, in their case, they got, you know, big water pumps to pump the water around, pressurize it. In our case, it's the chilled water system. But, you know, it's not, it's not something easy. I mean, it's, and I don't know, I don't know if that's been the problem with getting through the GPA, or if it's just a reluctance to do it, because it is what it is. It's industry standard, and that's how we've always done it, and that's the way we're going to do it. You know, maybe there's not a workable solution, but at least, you know, this starts the, you know, the dialogue to do something, you know.
I'm not opposed to the, but I'm just, I'm just wondering about the investment, because I know that was a major cost in getting our split airs and knowing, I mean, we have, I have different areas, and I tried not to turn everything.
Well, I don't know. An investment of that nature, and then the construction, everything doing that, I'd probably resign my position first before I'd want to face that gauntlet. It would, you know.
Yeah. What Clayton started by just rewiring the building. Other items, like your new complex has separate automatic transfer switches for each unit, and that's how and that's how you can get your individual meters and be built. We'd have to go and install separate automatic transfer switches for each unit, rewire the buildings back and forth to the master, to the generator. All that cost is way beyond what he's talking about. So it's a huge amount when all we're asking, we're not asking you, GPA, to bill separately, bill us 200 units. All we're asking is just bill us at residential rates. We'll take care of billing our owners and we still handle all that, all the sub-meters. We're not asking for individual meters. We still pay the master, the large bill, one client, one check, not 200. We're not asking, you know, I would think we're actually saving GPA time and effort and energy.
Senator Ogun? Speaker?
Thank you very much. I'm trying to, of course, understand this and follow the conversation, but I've never lived in a condo, so I really don't know and that's why I'm looking to you to understand. I understand, of course, that you get one billing, then you turn around and then you charge every single resident. Do you break down the way GPA, the way we receive our bills, do you break it down as well for them to basically show them their consumption so that then it'll be easy to determine then that for that individual resident, that they would be paying the difference of a commercial versus a residential rate?
Oka Towers can do that because they have sub-meters. Lupan Cove, we can't. I have one meter, I get a gross bill and so I estimate, you know, every year in September, I sit down and I, you know, I talk to GPA's controller, you know, you can do some base rate increases. I try to kind of gauge, you know, are they going to be closing the Straits of Hormuz? I mean, I never had to worry about that stuff 20 years ago and now I have to worry, you know, where's, where oil, I didn't expect oil to be $50 or under $50 a barrel, you know? That can be a bonus. I mean, I appreciate that. GPA passes that through under LEAC. But if it goes the other way, you know, so if I'm short, you know, if I'm $100,000 short in September, I'd have to redo my budget or have a special assessment. So I take, I take the gross number, say, this year I used $750,000. And then I multiply that by the percentage interest each particular class, studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, has in the total of 100%. And that's where I come up with, I come up with a figure for the monthly charge for power. I do the same thing with water, I do the same thing with insurance, I mean, every single one is factored in that fashion.
So, I mean, but, and you do this regardless, whether you know how each individual resident is making the effort to reduce their consumption? So you have a certain amount for a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one and a studio? And it's the same for everybody regardless?
Unfortunately, the way our building is, you know, there is no benefit for you turning off your air conditioner. In fact, if you turn off your air conditioner, your air handling unit and the people on either side or above or below run their coolers, your unit's going to sweat, it's going to condense and it's going to mold up. There's, unfortunately, there's just no way for any, I mean, you know, we've retrofitted the entire building with LED lighting for all the common areas. We encourage people, you know, to be mindful of turning off your lights, but turning off your air conditioner actually can be more damaging and that's where, you know, a major part of our energy consumption is.
Do any of your residents actually also use their residence for business?
No, no. I mean, it's, they're.
So strictly?
It's strictly a residential condominium. You may have home office stuff, but there's, you know, and there's, you know, everything is confined within the apartment and is run through the panel, so there's, you know, there's no, there's no additional, you know?
Your HBR.
And the horizontal property regime, you know, limits. Now, there's other, there's other condominiums that have some mixed use, but I think they're metered in such a way that they can bill it, you know, at a commercial rate.
Now, you mentioned earlier in your testimony about a hybrid. Maybe I need for you to kind of explain what you mean by the hybrid because I'm wondering whether residential charges might be different versus than the common area where you estimate how much that would cost as an annual fee. Could that, is that the kind of hybrid you're talking about or something else?
No, I'm, the hybrid I'm talking about is, right now, we're under a demand, we're under Schedule P and so there's a demand charge for Schedule P class. In this case, it's, you know, I get a KD reading of 408, it's billed at 572, so there's a, there's a charge there for $2,300 for that demand. Power factor, the power factor, in this case, we get a credit on our power factor because we're so efficient in, the power that comes in, we use very efficiently. But you have some places that have their power factors or maybe only 50, so they get, they get penalized for less efficient use of power. So the hybrid, I mean, and maybe it only applies to our case, I don't know. You know, maybe we might be the anomaly where, gee, we just can't help you because you're such an oddball. It is what it is. But, you know, in the case of Oka Towers and some of these other complexes, they don't, they don't, I mean, it's totally different. So the hybrid that I'm looking at is, you know, GPA does have a demand charge in there for a reason. You're going to demand X amount of power based upon your historical consumption. We have to be able to supply that. We're going to charge you for being, for demanding that whenever you choose to use it. So, you know, I can't just say, you know, take my, you know, my seven or eight item, line items here and make it, you know, all residential, it's not going to work. I mean, in my mind, so, yeah, I'm trying to understand this from GPA's perspective too.
Thank you very much. Senatora? Okay. Thank you very much. And so I'm going to go ahead and call up the second group. And so I have here, I guess it'll be written testimony from Dr. Jeff Johnson, chairman for the Guam PUC, but I guess he just submitted written testimony and he's not here today. I'm going to go ahead and call up John Beneventi, GPA Graham Botha, Joey Duñez, chairman of
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is John Beneventi, interim general manager for Guam Power Authority. Thank you for giving the Guam Power Authority an opportunity to testify on Bill 833, an act to provide for development and implementation of comparable rate schedule R charges for residential multifamily accommodations. GPA has carefully reviewed the bill as submitted and based on every view of one of the large condominium units with a master meter believes that the bill is unlikely to accomplish its stated intent. The Guam Public Utilities Commission, PUC, by law is charged with regulating rates for GPA. The PUC will be able to conduct an investigation onto what differences there would be if the rate schedule for condominiums with master meters were changed, as proposed from Schedule P to Schedule R, and then to determine whether the legislative findings are accurate. In analyzing the difference between a bill for Schedule P and Schedule R, the majority of the cost to residents of condominiums and residential single-family homes will remain the same. For example, the rates applicable to water well, self-insurance, fuel recovery and working capital charges are the same rates per kilowatt hour for Schedule P and Schedule R. It is unlikely that there will be a material difference in the amount a typical condo resident will pay in comparison to a single-family home if the rate schedule were changed. While there is a demand charge and power factor charge for Schedule P, there is a separate customer service charge for Schedule R. The charges for Schedule P and Schedule R are relatively equal with minor differences in energy charges. It is, again, I emphasize, it is the purview of the PUC to set and adjust rates for GPA and other utilities. And therefore, as I listen here today, it is a really kind of a complex problem in that there are Schedule P, there are Schedule J, there's Schedule G, as was mentioned by Chris Felix for the lower number of units of condos. And each of them have different charges that are, that are reviewed and could come up with differences. But again, even if, and they are correct, we can provide all the information, help the PUC make all the analysis, help make recommendations, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that are, we are not the ones that set the rates. So really, what we're trying to say is, PUC can do an investigation, a review of all of this and determine what may be an equitable solution. But furthermore, we cannot forget that the, whenever one part of the, we, GPA gets its rate from all its ratepayers. So whenever you reduce rate in one end, someone on the other end moves up. So that's why all these cross subsidies across the ratepayers really has to be looked at by the PUC if it was to change a particular rate like this. We support and we can work with all the condos and everyone, the PUC, to review this and put some finality, as Senator Rodriguez mentioned, what, 14 years now, to this issue. But again, this is based on our latest analysis and that's our testimony today. Thank you.
Mr. Duñez?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Joey Duñez, I'm the chairman for the CCU and I want to take the opportunity to thank you for the chance to be with before you today and give you. I had asked if, I came late, I'm sorry, so I had asked if I could have this passed out. And what we really wanted to do was to show, to demonstrate that if you had, and, oh, no, by the way, all this is just a blank bill.
Do we, did we make extra copies to maybe pass out to?
I have a, I have a few extra copies, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
They can, they can, no. No, no.
No, not that one. That one's blank. The one you have in your hand is extra copy.
I was just thinking about it. If we had some extra copies, maybe we can provide some copies for the first panel that came up to kind of follow along your explanation.
You can, you can give that one out.
Okay. Okay. How many copies you got there?
I have two.
Two copies. If you want, we can take a two-minute recess here. Okay. So we got enough copies out there so you guys can follow along? Okay, fine. We'll go ahead, please proceed.
What we tried to do was to review and see if you took a Schedule P, which is a large building and a three-phase, big building, and just took the consumption. And on top of, the first page is Schedule P, the second page is the residential rates. And what it is, we just spread the consumption according to the rates. And basically, we highlighted the fuel recovery, emergency water insurance, working capital surcharge, to show you that no matter what rate schedule you use, that's what you're going to get charged with. And even if you use the residential rates, you're going to pay that same charge. So there's no difference in the charges. When you get to the energy charge.
Okay, so those.
Those are the highlighted ones.
Okay, and that's the fuel recovery charge, emergency water well.
Insurance.
Insurance charge.
Working capital. And then on the residential, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, you will notice that there's about a dollar difference from $43,036.65 to $43,035.25. And that's due to the fact, if you look under the emergence, I mean, under the emergency water well waste, the first 500 is eliminated. So if you go to the consumption up there of 230,400 kilowatt hours, it would reduce it to 229,000 because you take away 500. And there's, that's the difference of the dollar in some sense. Now, if you look at the energy charge on the top, under Schedule P, it comes out to about $23,000. And Mr. DeValle was accurate, that first energy line there that says 14 cents per kilowatt, 14, 4, 4, 9, 0 cents per kilowatt hour, that's for the first 55,000. And then the balance would be, but I just, just to show you, if you took everything else other than the yellow ones, you're talking $23,023.76. If you look at the energy charge under the residential bill, you're looking at $20,703.27. And the difference again is, as Mr. DeValle stated, there's a demand charge. And so therefore, on the first page, on the Schedule P, you see 408, that's kilowatt demand. On the second page, there's no 408. That charge doesn't exist. But that charge is, again, as Mr. DeValle stated, that's a valid charge. And that, that's the $2,000 difference that you see. And that's to accommodate the chillers, the motors and all those things that make it a different kind of a building. So it's not quite a residential to residential. It's a residential with certain characteristics that make it that way and the costs are spread across, so there's really no big difference. They're basically, there's no inequity. They're basically the same if you go that way. If, you know, just as a strict comparison, I didn't do it for like Schedule J, which may be a smaller apartment building if it's master metered. But I would be willing to try to do that and bring it back and give the committee one. But what we did is just to, because I was concerned, I was here back in, I believe in November, Mr. Chairman, there was another bill that Senator Rodriguez had, and that, by the way, that's the first time I had ever heard about this issue. And I was telling the good senator that I had never heard about it before. I had a meet, I talked to my good friend Chris Felix on the way out and he said, well, we've talked to people. And I said, you know, Chris, I'm sorry, I've been on the CCU for six years. And I said, no, no member has ever mentioned it to me and no manager has ever mentioned it to me. And I didn't know this exists and I had not talked to Chris Felix about it or anybody else. Nobody talked to me. So I was new to this. So I wanted to go back really and say, hey, is there a real inequity? And so this is a, is an attempt to just kind of illustrate, using strictly a blank meter shape, page with the rates and to spread it out and say, okay, this is the part that is the same no matter what. If we do a Schedule J, that yellow part is going to be the same again. It's the same rate structure. And the only difference then becomes, the only difference then becomes the energy charge. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the panel here. Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much, Mr. Duñez, Mr. Beneventi, and Mr. Botha. And so, you know, and thank you for providing, because yes, you highlight, you know, what it is now and you make the argument even stronger that for a commercial, Schedule P, there is a separate charge, there's a demand charge. That's exactly what we're saying. A residential, a residential individual who owns a unit and uses as a residential should not be charged those, should not be charged what is being charged on a Schedule P for the demand charge. And the bill here is saying is that we acknowledge that in a big complex, you would have common areas, you would have an elevator, you would have the pool. And so this, this bill here says that, okay, you must have a, you must carve that out. And perhaps if the, in developing this, this structure, that, you know, you would, you know, have those now deemed part of the commercial complex, then that's where that Schedule P and whatever is included is part of that structure. But all I'm saying is that, like, we heard buildings have sub-meters, right? And I think we talked about this in November when we spoke about how, you know, I know this for a fact too, when I was renting a commercial space in a large building, the landlord would have a sub-meter, read the sub and charge me based on what he's charged by GPA. And so what we're saying here is why can't that be done? I know since 2003, Mr. Beneventi, this is something, issues that has been going on. And, you know, I don't know, you're the experts, right? Why can't that be? Or if it can't be, has it been evaluated in terms of why can't, if they have a sub-meters, simply, you have one customer, but charge these, these sub-meters on a residential rate? And also, this was one more thing. And I think the testimony from Mr. Beneventi, at least for me, I took it that, you know, this is an attempt to change the rate. We're not attempting to change any rate. We're attempting, we're saying there's residential rate structure state remains the same. All we're saying is that you apply it to residents who are living in condominiums. So there's no attempt to change the rate. If there's an attempt, have to be, would have to formulate from GPA and then you go to PUC for that approval.
Senator, if I could respond. The problem in trying to carve that out is that GPA puts a meter in, we don't control what happens behind the meter. So as I heard Mr. Clayton DeValle very accurately describe, So as, as I heard Mr. Clayton DeValle very accurately describe, he's got different motors and different pumps, but they're all used by the residences too. That's no different than if they had a split unit, they would still have to pay for that. At the end of the day, what I'm trying to relay here and demonstrate or kind of show you, is at the end of the day, the amount that GPA would charge would be roughly the same amount again, because the only difference between the two pages is one has 408 kilowatt demand, the other one doesn't. And if you put that
But it can't be the same, though, it can't be the same.
No, no, it, Senator, respectfully, I would say this, having also sat on the PUC, believe me, rates are based, and this is what we said in November, I believe, rates are based on cost of service. These are very things that they do where they allocate cost. And when I did this exercise, and I came down and I, the difference is just about the $2,000, you know, and basically, if you did the, if you did the demand charge, that's the $2,000-some dollars. So that tells me that the cost of, that they allocated are accurate, that the costs are real. The difference being that that homeowner in his residence, who has a split unit, is not incurring a demand charge, doesn't have big chillers, doesn't have motors, doesn't have any of those things. But the condominium building does, and so that has to be paid. And it, it's going to be paid anyway by the same people, the same residences. So at the end of the day, there really is not this, you know, I was afraid that somebody thought, hey, if we charge, if you applied residential rates to us, we'd get a 30% discount. And you can't. The biggest cost here is fuel, and, you know, that, that's what I'm trying to relay. And, you know, maybe, I would love, I had, I had asked to meet with you earlier, Senator, I would love to sit down and kind of do more and go through more of this with the realtors. I had asked to see them too.
Yeah, and I think, and thank you, and I think the most appropriate way is, we asked the chairman, we request the chairman if he can, you know, when he does have a markup hearing, that everyone be at the table to discuss, because this is going down the same road we went in November, where, and I don't want it to go down that road where we're just going back and forth, but I think a more productive way would be to have a discussion among everyone, the experts, with you guys involved, so that we can all understand it better and from there move forward and see what the best course of action to take. Because if it, if it's, in the end of the day, if it's as PUC had suggested, that we go there, I'd be the first one there to make this argument there, if that's the case, if that's what needs to be done. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request if we can have that markup.
And I will commit to, to calling for roundtable discussions subsequent to this hearing. However, I just want to say too that, you know, this, this is going to take some scheduling and whatnot, and so we may not be able to get the bill reported out in time for the, for the February session, but, you know, if you've been waiting for 14 years, maybe you can wait for another 14 days. Okay? So, but I will commit to, to the sponsor that we will have subsequent roundtable discussions, okay? So that we can take this down. Okay. Senator Ogun, do you have any questions? Speaker? Vice Speaker? Senatora? Okay. So there being, I'm sorry, you're finished? Okay, fine. There have been no other, there have been no other persons signing up, so I'll consider Bill 18-dash, what the hell, 8-33 as having been duly heard. Thank you. The next bill that's up for discussion is Bill Number 18-33. Okay, we're going to go ahead and start out with the next bill, please take the discussion outside. Thank you. So the next bill that's up for, for discussion is Bill 18-33 introduced by Senator Anthony Adah. I'm going to go ahead and have the sponsor of the bill introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, 1833, what in a sense it does is that it just requires that all broadband deployment fees assessed by Guam agencies be at cost base. You know, we know that really internet services and has really come a long way from dial-up, you know, to broadband services here on Guam, and we know that it is widely available more here on Guam than it is nationally. But the problem is here on Guam is that we, we don't take into account the slower speeds of the services in relation to the higher prices that we, that we pay compared to the rest of the nation. And, you know, broadband services nowadays is not, it's, it's like water and power now, you know, it's become, and it's not a luxury, it's become that way of life, where telecommunications to a person's home to, you know, bring them up to speed with education or business or whatever it may be, and we want to make that service available throughout the island. As small as our island is, yet we're not able to get these services into every, every square meter of the island and at affordable rates. It just doesn't fit well. You know, broadband companies, they don't, they don't pay the government permits and fees, their customers do. You know, imagine if Guam was to decide that, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and charge GPA for putting up power poles and GWA for abating the water pipes, you know, their, their customers are going to be paying those fees too. And all it is, is just to really make, and we need to do what we can to make broadband services affordable here on Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I have a number of individuals who signed up, who have to provide written testimony, but only Mr. Dan Taidinko has signed up to provide oral testimony. Yeah, written testimony, but are you going to provide oral testimony also? Okay. And Mike, you're going to, the director of land management, provide oral testimony? Please come on forward. I've got here Renee Lau, are you going to provide oral testimony? Okay. And I have John Day. Okay, you're going to, you want, did you want to provide oral testimony? Okay, fine. And that's, that's about it. Okay. All right, so we'll start with, start with GTA. Orders, oh, no, wait a minute, I'm going to go ahead and start with the order of sign-up then, so Mr. Mike Borha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss Bill Number 18-33. While this bill more generally concerns the use of rights of way, specific items within the bill relate to matters within the realm of responsibility for the Department of Land Management. The following are this department's comments regarding the bill. A time constraint of 30 days is levied on the government agencies to issue permits. This time period in some cases may not be sufficient time for regulatory agencies that normally review these applications to complete their review. Permit application, excuse me, permit applications for infrastructure development may require the review of the Application Review Committee, or ARC, which is made up of the government's regulatory agencies, who ascertain the overall environmental, socioeconomic, infrastructural, and cultural impact of the proposed projects. We recommend the time period be extended to 60 days, which is the affixed time period permitted by 21GCA. In three separate sections of the bill, there is a mention of permitting structures on rights of way, but each structure description is different in size. For example, there's one that's 160 square feet, one that's 200 square feet, and one that's 350 square feet, and we just recommend a uniformity in the structure size. Section 81109, paragraph 3, allows a blanket authorization on structures and buildings to be deemed legal non-conforming. The term legal non-conforming applies to existing buildings and is not intended to be a general exception to the future, to future construction. We do not believe this blanket authorization is beneficial because it permits possible intrusions of structures where it may not be in the interest of safety, in the interest of safety to the community. On number four, section 81109, subsection four, places a 10-year moratorium